Call the order of the agenda for the regular meeting for the Village Board, April 23rd, 2014. Time is now 6:32. If you would rise with me for the House of Lords.
The House of Lords, this is by the United States of America, the United Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Gonzalez. Gray. Henson. Olson. President. Horn. Here.
Up. Here.
And Raisik.
Item E, open the public agenda items online. Please hold your comments to three minutes, come to voting, give your day of address.
Steve Stockton, 257025. By Levine. I've got a couple of questions here about items H2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. I'm just curious why none of this stuff is on the website?
I'm sorry?
I'm curious why none of this stuff is on the website or the agenda.
Well, the budget review is merely a point of comment. There was nothing actually prepared for that specifically in writing at the time. So that was merely to address the fact that we are taking steps to review the budget and to approve it, but we do not have the budget in hand to do such a stuff. Okay? What kind of stormwater IGA, we'll address that when we get to it. Approval of AD equipment purchase, approval of park and rec, A25I S4 purchase, and approval of professional agreement. I believe, if I understood correctly, the reason why they were not included in the online board package is because they were pertaining to matters of contractual negotiation until certain times they're actually approved. You don't want to necessarily reveal the pricing and such as quoted until the boards have a chance to review those.
Well, once time is actually taken, and such terms could be negotiated between a vendor and/or a supplier.
Or somebody were to ask for additional pricing, or whatever the case may be, or where people want to unfairly disadvantage somebody very much.
Yeah, eventually the agreement should be published, but until that time, the board takes the final deal on it.
I just want to get front of the board. Anything else, sir?
I'm just trying to make sure we're doing our transparency that you're always trying to bring forward.
Anybody else? Item consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
I'd like to remove items 1, the minutes of the regular board meeting, from the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Judge.
In a formal motion?
Okay, just for a form of clarification, any items that one of you removed from the consent agenda, this doesn't require a motion. It's merely a matter of coming to court either at this time or in advance. You'd like an item removed from the consent agenda, and they'll do that. But so that doesn't require a motion.
My motion would go to the rest of the panel.
Derek, that'll be fine. Second on the motion to approve the remaining portion of the consent agenda. So we got Olson and Raisik. Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, I assume you have a question or a ready?
Just, I didn't even question, but just a form of clarification or made mention of it in item G on the agenda about the consent agenda. Inside of it, you know, because I had a couple of items removed last month, and the inclusion of the discussion, reasons why the bills were not included, and we had a lengthy discussion, but the bills to be approved after the board approved those costs, and it even required direction from the attorney. And I just thought that instead of discussion included, it should have been a very clear point that we even made mention that the attorney would draw up a preliminary policy, that that should have been included. And then secondly about the, just wanted to make sure that that actually been happened too.
All right. So...
And then secondly after about that, and then status and actions to be taken about regarding Egyptian Trail and the IDOT project. And the way it stated in there too, and I just wanted to be careful on how it stated, that it showed just how things were stated and not somebody's input on how it should be stated, but nothing in there made mention of statements made or the meetings attended and discussions by Ruben Batista. So I just thought that should have been included in there as well. Because everything, the actions that we took on that status was regarding meetings and things attended by Ruben, and I thought those should have been included as well.
If you'd like, we can simply pass over the approval of these amendments on the next meeting, and we can have those re-drafted.
Just a couple of points, a couple of points added to it?
That's fine, they don't have to be approved at this meeting. So, okay, so would you mind reviewing the audio of whatever is necessary to...
I think we just have to review the tape, because I don't think it was recorded, you know, because this was in a warm session.
Can you have a...
Okay, all right, sure, okay, perfect.
It may not be verbatim, but it will be a little more of what you're talking about. So, that's fine. All right, so I was told from the consent agenda, this time we are not voting on the
approval of the...
You need a motion table? So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
So we got Olson and Horn for tabling of the minutes. Can I roll call, please?
Olson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Is something...
Trustee Gray is not present.
Thank you.
Okay. Item G, Court's report.
Your Honor, I'm just reporting that there is an education gala for Crete Moni School District Department for trustee Gonzalez, if she has an important issue.
Well, thanks for putting that on the agenda. I didn't expect that, I was going to stay up for the open discussion, but thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody and bring everybody's attention to the Crete Moni Education Foundation, of which many people may not even be aware that we have one. This coming Saturday is our annual Spring Gala being held at Memorial Race Track from 6 to 10. Tickets are available in advance, forty-five dollars, or at the door for fifty dollars. And includes both, there's a buffet dinner, as well as open bar, and a giant silent auction with entertainment and everything. And of course, this is all, everything that we make for this event funds the, the foundation provides scholarships, both athletic and memorial and academic scholarships for all of the Crete Moni School District. We funded projects for not only scholarships, but for Special Olympics, as well as field improvements on the football field, as well as the summer enrichment program and the drama program. So, we're doing a great job, and we'll raise about thirty thousand dollars in one night for that. Well, and actually on the silent auction too, we have a premiere, some of the silent auction items include several iPods and iPad minis. We have a Kindle, and on the premiere raffle, there are even a laptop and a full-size iPad this year too. So there's some really, really nice items offering at auction and raffle this year. So, if anybody has tickets, I know there who's got some extras.
I bought tickets last year, had a good time. I bet, I remember bidding for White Sox tickets, which I actually won, unfortunately, I'm a Cubs fan.
Well, we have actually two, we did have two premier Cubs packages this year too, so...
It's nice to see, though, an organization put together support when tax money is very short right now, this type of program, so that we can have other schools and groups to be committed.
I'm just a little part of it, so I'm just very proudly part of it. So, thanks for putting that on, Levine.
Any other, sir? That's all I have, I think. Did you have a question? All right. On the mayor's agenda, item H1, we get a defer to counsel on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this is the parcel of property that the village previously pre-annexed into the village. Maybe October of last year. This property is south of our current boarders. We received a letter from a gentleman who owns the property, Eagle Lake Road, asking us to consider the vacating of a pre-annexation agreement that we signed with this gentleman. It appears as though, once you pre-annex the property, IDOT approached to purchase the property. When you do the pre-annexation agreement, that's recorded, was recorded of deeds. So when IDOT did what we call a title search, they had pre-annexation agreements show up on title. From what we understand, it's IDOT's policy, not the purchase property, if such an agreement is in effect. That runs with the land, meaning a pre-annexation agreement is recorded, so obviously it's public record. We received a letter from council for this gentleman, asking us to basically vacate that property, actually, yeah, vacate the agreement, in order for the purchase to go through with IDOT. From what we understand, IDOT has a pretty strong policy with respect to this matter. Therefore, gentlemen, for council, for the individual has asked us to consider vacating the annexation, pre-annexation agreement. We did get a letter dated April 10th from his council. The board's got a couple of options, you can vacate it if you so deem appropriate, which means, in essence, the agreement is non-voy. Two, you can leave it the way it is, meaning don't take any action on it. Or three, you know, it's possibly considered, the board wanted to, you know, look at possibly acquiring that property. So you have three options. I believe this gentleman's timeframe is somewhat tight, I believe sometime he may. And he is, he's sort of under the gun from my understanding, but he's respectfully asked the board to consider what options would be available. He would ask that we vacate the pre-annexation agreement.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Some of you may know, my wife's been working with a number of people in the area on relative annexation. There's literally thousands of acres being discussed right now as potential land that would be annexed. Virtually every one of those now can only be done if there's a clause in there that allows them to back out in a situation like this. If we were to not honor this and let them back out, it would make it very hard to close any future deals. So I would recommend that we go ahead and honor this gentleman's request. It was not in his agreement, the mission, I was not on the board at that time, but I do remember it was not on his agreement, but any future agreements, I understand, will probably be that way. I have personally met with a number of people outside of the area that are talking with the village about possible annexation, and virtually to a person, they will not sign an annexation agreement or pre-annexation agreement with us unless we have a clause in there that gives them this out. So I would make a motion that we allow them to get out of this.
Any other discussion?
Actually, I do have one thing to add, to go on with what trustee Olson is saying is, we've already purchased some property here in the village that we are sitting on, hoping for something to happen. If we go ahead and weigh the last option of purchasing more property south of this town, I don't think that would be a good thing for the current board to have to swallow and have to face. I do agree with trustee Olson, of relieving this man of the pre-annexation, moving forward for the other possible pre-annex families to say that we have that option to go in, where the village is not going to have to eat anywhere from, you know, I'm going to ballpark, ten acres to a hundred acres. Then what are we going to do with that land, just in case? But I absolutely would second that motion from trustee Olson to go ahead and let this gentleman be, go back to IDOT.
Any other discussion?
And we've talked to the homeowner, and he is, he is ready to sell, and he wants...
You know, you get a letter in your packet that refers to that.
As I understand it, trustee Gonzalez, this particular homeowner's got some land in Indiana, they're actually thinking of buying and moving to. This is the case where they've been planning on moving anyway, and this is probably the best thing for them. There's no economic loss to the village in doing this, and there's a potential for a break up with this, because again, we're sending a clear message to those people who already have thousands of acres. There's one in particular, I know that has six hundred acres, it's very close to Sandy right now. These people are watching this, and if we don't act in good faith, we won't get those lands.
Well, and the only discussion I would add on that, or is I don't want that to hurt our annexation plans, you know, with all the pre-annexations, then, you know, on our side of it, that I see as...
So, if I could just put in my two cents on this issue, and that is, it has nothing to do specifically with the property owner or that situation there, as much as it is with IDOT. And I will go on public record as to stipulate that I'm very frustrated with IDOT right now for their tactics, I'll just leave it at that, pertaining to their polarizing position contrary to municipal involvement in the proposed airport. That is the biggest point of frustration that I am encountering here with this. We are being the responsible, neighborly, caring unit of government that represents the people that have shown interest in being part of our community. IDOT has taken a position that they want nothing to do with any municipalities, boundaries that are approaching on their potential airport. And to me, that is, that is a problem, especially when we're viewing state statutes, there is no statute prohibiting that. It is merely a internal policy of preference. And trustee Horn met with me and one of our state reps, and the director of air hottics, and one of their council, and needless to say, it was not an encouraging situation for the long-term perspective here for municipal involvement of the proposed airport, if there actually were to be one. So, I have a motion on the table from trustee Olson, I have a second from trustee Gray. Any other discussion?
Roll call, please. Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Up?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Next item is H2. Authorization for professional agreement. If I could have Superintendent Cruzal come forward and give any answering questions to the members of this.
Good evening. I hope you already have it explained, the procedure that we were doing with this. It's pretty cut and drag, we want to get ahead of the rain season, we want to install meters at our flumes for our wastewater, to, A, test the accuracy of our Aqua flumes, where we get charged for our sanitary. Part of the reason why it was not on the board is we really don't want to let Aqua know we're doing this, because we're going to be in the manhole ahead of them, and I don't want them to try to recalibrate their equipment to show it. As you know, we get charged for INI, which doubles our bill for the sanitary, and this is phase one of putting together a plan to isolate where our worst INI problems, which is influent infiltration of stormwaters into our sanitary sewers. The lift stations are spread around municipality in such a way that if we can monitor the flow at each one of the lift stations, as well as the two flumes, we can gather that data with our rain gauge and be able to determine where the worst points are to the, you know, least amount of concerned areas, and we can proceed with setting a plan up to try to smoke task, televise, formulate a plan for repair. Because EPA is driving this, and it will cost the village more if we don't get on this to be more of a proactive take with our wastewater and our sanitary. And we have to do it, it hasn't been done before.
Is there a reason we believe Aqua's monitoring is not entirely accurate?
I have reason to believe the way the flumes are designed right now, their technology is older, and there has been some question with regards to that, with all the data that we've calculated.
If we find a different INI, can we use that data to, to start a bill off?
Well, what we're going to do is, we're going to use basically the cumulative data that we get, as the packet explained, we're going to monitor the lift stations for a period of two months, but we're going to monitor those flumes for two weeks, just to test that two-week accuracy, to see if what's flowing on their end is the same on our end. Without going into great detail, we can talk offline about it, I believe there is an issue with that, and I want to, this is part of, this is the first part of the test. We're trusting right now accuracy with Aqua's equipment, and that's what we're getting charged with, is Aqua's equipment that's in the flumes. It's Aqua's flumes, we just monitor them, and this is going to be a test to make sure that what we are actually being charged is correct.
Is there any other option besides this?
No, sir.
Did we get other quotes?
We have gotten other quotes, per se, but this engineer is the one that is preferred with this type of equipment that we're going to do.
By who?
The engineering staff itself. When previous administration was here, we had worked on this for a couple of years, and it just has taken this long to develop, so...
Is it good practice to go out and do something like this without any competitive bids?
It's professional services, I'm not going to say discretion there, Mr. Congressman.
It is professional services, they are very well respected in engineering.
I know the name, yes.
Do we have the right, but again, they are, it seems within reason, that's concise, but they are well respected.
Because of the confidentiality nature of this, this is not something that we're going to go out to bid on the project, and because this is a project that is right up Robinson's alley, to be able to do...
Yeah, they're good for...
You say this is budgeted, this is in this year's budget?
It has been in this year's budget, it has been in the previous year's budgets, it's never been used to do this type of testing. It will remain in the budget as we develop a plan and repair it, once we calculate this data.
Okay, so the month's almost over, Darryl, will you be able to approve this, or we have to roll this into next year's budget?
I've improved some of it, next year's budget, that's why I have in the budget, I don't have total, I don't have this current budget to use.
So what's not used here will be rolled over to next year?
We have discussed that already, fighting tonight.
Entertain a motion to approve item H2.
So moved.
Second.
It's almost over. Roll call, please.
Trustee Up?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Item H3. Any questions on item H3?
I have, John Garrett. We've gone, we've gotten through, as far as I know, been trustee going on four years. I don't really feel that it's necessary to buy a gator. We have, you know, work trucks we can go around and do with, we've gotten the gator as far as Fall Fair, Fall Fest, Halloween happenings, Creed has loaned us one. We reciprocated that by buying brand-new mowers from them. I personally have a big problem with buying a new gator, because just, I don't, I don't feel a need for one. We have no need vehicles that we can go around town and do things with. I just don't feel the need to, you know, buy a fifteen thousand dollar gator. I just don't feel it, it's necessary to do that. We have enough vehicles in this town that if we need to get around to do the retention ponds, or pick up paper, or, you know, with the Fall Fest, when other people are loaning us one, we can do without it.
Any more questions?
This budget?
Yes.
In this year's budget or next year's budget?
This year.
I'm sorry?
There's still some on this year's, and it was going to be for next year.
Do we borrow a piece of equipment right now to do any items that this does?
Do we borrow them?
Borrow any equipment from Creed or anywhere else?
Borrow one from me, my golf cart that has the toolbox on the back. We borrowed in the past, equipment with the, I believe we had to put up a security to make sure that if we broke the equipment, we were liable, we would have to buy it. We borrowed in the past for park events, the John Garrett gators from Baseball, who owns two, Shaward Home and Auto, who has one that they use for a demo in-house, and from the village at Creed who owns one. Now with our working relationships that I have with these entities, they have been more than willing to give us these things when we need them. Baseball's currently using theirs now, Creed is currently using theirs now, and Shaward is currently using theirs now.
Let me ask you this, Mr. President. I assume that just like any neighborly situation, you can go to your neighbor's house, you can borrow something a couple of times, three or four times, at some point, if you're not reciprocating, it's not a mutually satisfying situation there, and you expect the reciprocity, I mean, the, you expect us to continue with our usage rental, whatever you want to call it, for these types of things? I know like with FEMA, you know, we have reciprocity agreements we have to have on certain things, you know, other situations where we have with other communities. How do you expect that to work? You know, right now, we're borrowing, bagging, flipping, whatever, for different things that we need to do. If you got, you got an area out here behind the oracles and stuff like that, you can't get to with a regular vehicle, no matter how you cut it.
Most of our detention ponds, you can't get with a regular vehicle. So, as it was stated, and I apologize for the way it came out on the board packet, the wrong letter got inadvertently put in there, I had left the new package, so you can kind of see and explain what was going on with that. During events such as, we'll just say Fall Fest, because we recently took that over, it was found during that time, when we were helping seniors get around the event and the yards, that we needed something with more than just two seats. We were going to multitask this as being a four-seater, has a cargo box on it, to be able to help during any event, whether it's the Easter that we just had, or any Monee event, but then utilize it in the off-season for detention pond maintenance, larva siding. Last year, when I borrowed Creed's to do our larva siding for our mosquitoes, where I got that grant from this year, we did our larva siding in a day and a half. My guy's been working with the truck, obviously, it's a little harder when you're in a truck to have to get out, put it in, instead of drive right up next to a stormwater pond to drop larva siding. He's been out it for three days doing that, and he's still got more to do. So, is there cost savings in having one of these? Yes. Could we possibly borrow it again? Yes. If we break it or it gets damaged, will we be buying it anyway? Yes. It's just timing's up without getting our equipment, so, however you view it.
So, the question comes into play here, Roland, with what Trustee Gray brought up, and Trustee also both, I mean, you got the situation here, is, do we, and I understand your concerns there, yet with being within budget doesn't mean you have to do it necessarily either. But in that regard, we start to consider the value of man-hours, the convenience of being able to take care of things, this would potentially be able to serve multiple purposes, not just the parks programs. I guess the question is, do we wanna equip ourselves with having this readily available? Because if there was ever any kind of situation where something was going on, crisis or otherwise, we wouldn't have it to pull from. And even our DJ's, you know, cart, whatever else, it's not like we have an abundance of ATVs or anything else, and I recommend you can buy our most. So, it's up to, if you feel the relevance within our staff to do their job efficiently and timely, and having the ability to do this, I want to hand a motion to approve the item. That's up to the board.
And I can only just add my two cents worth here, too, and I guess the relevance and the timeliness, but then the also the prioritization of it. And this is something to, if we wanna grow parks and rec, did we look at like a DNR grant or a cost matching? Is that something that, do we need to buy this today? Maybe not, you know, so, and I understand it's in the budget, and yes, we wanna grow parks and rec, and yes, we wanna have it available to us, but wondering if any other avenues have been checked into perhaps with a cost matching, or like a half-and-half grant with DNR? Because this sounds...
We have looked into that, just to answer that question, just so you know, but that would be more for park development to where, as we've talked in the past, about getting a conceptual plan to redo Fireman's Park here, to be able to meet that needs. That's where the grant would come in, to help to deliver and expand those yards, so.
Yes, I know.
It matters, it matters not to me, however you wanna do this.
Just, I may have one more word, and again, because earlier, we talked about the words of being raised.
Mm-hmm.
In the village, we don't have a park district.
Correct.
We have a parks and rec. And again, and I know that, you know, it, just the way you said, or Superintendent wasn't, if we had a park district...
That's why it stayed in my park and rec department.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to make it clear on record that...
We borrow from parks and rec.
Correct. And again, it's just the way people were things, because a lot of people have talked in the past about why we don't have a park district. So, I just wanted to make it quite clear that we don't have a park district, we have parks and rec.
I'm certainly, I'm certainly in favor of approving parks and rec. I've been involved in many different ways in parks and rec. I'm also in favor of a plan that goes out and says, here's how we're gonna do it, here's all the things we need. I don't like piecemealing. Get two different things in here. I understand indeed, go take care of ponds and lakes, that takes a one-seater, not a four-seater. I understand why you need something to run around and help people when we have different events, that takes a four-seater. You can buy a four-seater at the golf, used golf cart place down in Piaton for thirty-five hundred dollars. I know because I bought two, and I even have a plate on one of them that I bought that holds maintenance items. Here, we're talking about sixteen thousand dollars in a year, where we're behind our budget substantially.
Those are different, just so that you're aware. Golf carts, I have one myself that I use, that is gas-powered, and the way the clutching works, it's different, you can't tow things with that.
When I'm gonna speak, you can speak. I would like to see us come up with a plan of all the things that we need in parks and rec department, and come back with a plan that says, here's the different things we need. I'm not saying we don't need this, I'm not saying it's not better, but I don't see a plan. Just a couple of months ago, we had something else that we approved that was not, that wasn't in the budget. We're spending money that's not in the budget, we need to pull back on something that is in the budget. And I don't see this as a necessity right now.
That's all I say, is just a very well-planned, just to use and apply for a re-harthing.
Do I have a motion or not? It's like, for lack of a motion, it fails. Item number H4. Any discussion on that?
I'll make that motion and we approve H4.
Second, second.
Gray, Grayson?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Mr. Colwell? If you would, please, speed up the stats on the IGA issue with the stormwater management. I know we have been in the quest of some information. Just so you know, we don't have any paperwork, and that's not on our fault. It's, and to go with Mr. Stockton's question earlier, we are in a time crunch on approval of an intergovernmental agreement that would be necessary in order for a couple of projects that Will County is entertaining, it would be of benefit to the village of Moni, also would be of benefit to the township, and partially to University Park as well. Help me if I can get this wrong, but the point is, is that Will County has indicated in order for us to report that the Stormwater Management Committee requires an intergovernmental agreement between us and any other government and themselves in order to proceed. Otherwise, we get looked at, we don't have the opportunity for the assistance on the stormwater management issues. And Superintendent Crusell has diligently sought out trying to get the document from the Stormwater Management Committee. We were hoping we were gonna have it before the agenda, we were hoping we were gonna have it before the meeting. At this point, we do might have that intergovernmental agreement, the pretty poor replacement standard, but we gotta make sure it's the one that they are looking for, just like when we did the stoplight up there at Egyptian, Egyptian, at Manan, Manan Moni Grove. We are gonna be in a little bit of a time crunch if we do get a big one in place, that we may miss our deadline, if we have to wait for our next village board meeting, which will be after the next Stormwater Committee meeting. So, I'm not necessarily asking you to make a motion to approve something you haven't read, this isn't the healthcare thing in Washington, but...
Who's this from?
I believe it's third, I think, is that correct? And so, I guess what I'm looking for is, with some direction given to the council, if we do get an agreement, the council would be able to review that and scrutinize the relevance of our concern in that regard, to make sure that we're not legally getting ourselves into something we shouldn't. But otherwise, we're not getting the assistance we need from the county. So, anything we get out of that is gonna be part of the nothing.
What you may wanna consider, Your Honor, is a motion, if the board did approve it, motion to approve subject to final legal review of and supervisor of Crusell's consent. If you don't have it on, it's done prior to that, where it's final review, that will give you a fail-safe, hopefully, condition where we, you still have a couple set of eyes on the matter. The deadlines may third, the only option would be to consider that, to approve it subject to final legal review with the consent of Ms. Crusell and Mr. Batista.
Right, and I would say that this is not a lack of finding on our part, this is something that Will County told us at the last meeting, it's the first one we knew that we actually had to have the IGA. So, it's kind of a, by the way, we just need to have this, and they're not helping us with it work, but, so, so, if what you're saying is, we could entertain a motion for an approval of an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement with Will County Stormwater, with review of legal and the department head.
Yes, and Mr. Batista. It's done, unfortunately, these things do happen when you deal with our criminal agencies, especially in Cook County. So, what happens is, you make a motion to authorize a mayor to execute the same, subject to final legal review along with Mr. Batista and Mr. Crusell.
I'll arrange a motion to that, second.
So, we...
Second.
Discussion, discussion here. Can we do that with the understanding that this will be reviewed at the next village board meeting?
We could email it, or we could tell you it's in your mailbox, it's available for you to review as well.
Not so much for us, but for the public, it wasn't public, as you brought up earlier.
Oh, yeah, they could be added to the next packet, once it is, absolutely.
Thank you.
That's fine.
So, is the Storm, Storm Water Committee, is that a Will County Board Committee?
It's a committee that is under the jurisdiction of the county executive. He has the, the word of all to appoint committee members and such. Actually, Superintendent Crusell has been recommended, but we're still waiting on the formalities. He's been recommended to serve on that committee as well, to make sure that Eastern Will County specifically has employees on that committee. And that's something we've been liking. If you pay attention to some of the cattails and such that are grown in areas that twenty, thirty years ago they weren't, you know, that's an issue, because a lot of times, it's because of broken tiles and things like that, if you're growing crops in the fields. So, like when University Park is flooded by a comment and end up in that area there, that's as a result of some of the stuff we're trying to get fixed, which ultimately affects us in planning the property and other areas that there are. So, it's frankly, it's a tool I can use. So, I get a motion and a second here.
Holston, move, Grayson.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Next, on the agenda, H7. Fridays Kirk and Bowler, would you?
Good evening, board. Where are you at?
I know that you've been working pillars like, during the budget, and making sure revenue is consistent and line, also trying to cut back anywhere you can, so we actually have a balanced budget, especially for a general fund. It's a plus mine out, we've never had a balanced budget in our town, always one of the more expenses than any home, from my opinion. I know this is still annoying, that's not necessarily the norm, there's no reason why you can't have a balanced budget, where you stipulate what your expenses are, based on what your revenue is gonna be, and try to match that as much as possible. In the event, for some reason, and we've had a discussion with council on this as well, in the event that you have a situation where you have a grant come in, where there's an eighty-twenty match on acquisition of land, or something of that sort, that was out of the norm, not necessarily budgeted, in those situations, you could actually, the board could take an action, or they would say, we're gonna exchange this liquid asset for a fixed asset, and they could do that by board action. But it's gonna be a deliberate action of the board to dip into the reserves, not something that just casually happens. And that's the reason for a balanced budget, as much as anything. And it's not something ridiculous to happen, but it's just, that is your allowance to do that if you need to. You were provided a copy in your mailbox of a draft. This draft has been through several iterations. This is not, I'd only pick anybody who have had a chance to review it for tonight's meeting. What I'd like to do is call the meeting for next Monday, perhaps, special meeting. There'll be a few items on there, but one of those would certainly be for review of finances, and consideration of adopting a big budget, based on the worksheet that's been provided, and it changes the might need to be made. I know Daryl's been inundated with a lot of things here, so, it's not something too casual, so I'm not gonna give you all at least a weekend to review this and come up with any additional questions.
Mr. Mayor, Monday's not a good day for me. I do completely agree with having a meeting, but unfortunately, I've got to connect this on Monday.
Okay.
Second, another day that...
What are your ones there?
Well, we have a sprint bill listed, but we may have to back out of that.
This is more...
I agree. I can go first, I know if I'm...
Okay. So, next Wednesday, six thirty?
Sure.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Make that motion. Seventeen fourteen additions, five minutes, from Maryland.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
Attorney, Justice?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item we have on the agenda, my, sorry, before we get to that, just let the board know, should have brought this up, when we vacated that pre-annexation agreement, the title company might request an ordinance, as of the record, so, we'll find out tomorrow once we talk to Mr. Hickey. We don't have the day to action on that tonight, but if you see an ordinance, next ten, fourteen days, they might want an ordinance to vacate that, so.
Should we go with adopting ordinance number four, that's what it's called?
I'd rather wait to see what the title company's requesting, because I'll have to identify, more likely, the ordinance that adopted that and vacate that ordinance, so I think we have a little time on that. Thank you, Mayor. The next item is Eagle Fair recapture fees. Mr. Flanagan, who I believe is present tonight, sent us a letter, and I believe he sent Mr. Wallace a letter back in December. Mr. Flanagan is the developer of the Eagle Fair Estates, that started back, I believe, in two thousand and six. And that annexation agreement, there is a provision for what they call a recapture, for certain costs that Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Willis, I believe, incurred with respect to putting in certain sanitary sewer infrastructure. Mr. Flanagan has submitted a letter from Landmark Engineering, indicating that they believe that cost, additional cost, because of the oversizing of some of the piping out there, I believe was five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Mr. Flanagan is here tonight to ask for the five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. There are a couple of issues that should be discussed, I believe. The first issue, I believe this is the, if I understand correctly, this is the first time we heard about the five hundred and seventy-eight... I recommend we have a meeting of the committee in the hall.
It could actually be a special meeting. Because if you have a special meeting versus a committee in the hall, you can actually throw it on things, such as the...
Alright, so there may be other items to...
There might be.
Okay, and that's the case, then we back up to the Stormwater. I think it's possible we can have that on there, but...
If we have it available.
That would satisfy a couple of...
If we have it available, then we could, that's still good.
That would give us plenty of time to approve.
If it's available, by then, it won't be an issue.
6:30.
6:30.
Do you need a motion?
I'll retain a motion to have a special meeting to next Wednesday, which is... 8:30. And that motion? 7:18, additions, plans, from Maryland.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Horn.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Grayson.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item we have on the agenda, my... Sorry, before we get to that, just let the board know, should have brought this up. When we vacated that pre-annexation agreement, the type of company might request an ordinance to have the record. So, we'll find out tomorrow, once we talk to Mr. Hickey. We don't have the day to action on that tonight, but if you see an ordinance the next 10 to 14 days, they might want an ordinance to vacate that, so...
Should we just go with adopting ordinance number 4 of that, or is it clear?
I'd rather wait to see what the type of company's requesting, because I'll have to identify more likely the ordinance that adopted that and vacate that ordinance. So, I think we have a little time on that. Thank you, Mayor. The next item is Eagle Fair recapture fees. Mr. Flanagan, who I believe is present tonight, sent us a letter, and I believe he sent Mr. Wallace a letter back in December. Mr. Flanagan is the developer of the Eagle Fair Estates that started back, I believe, in 2006. And that annexation agreement, there is a provision for what they call a recapture for certain costs that Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Willis, I believe, incurred with respect to putting in certain sanitary sewer infrastructure. Mr. Flanagan has submitted a letter from Landmark Engineering indicating that they believe that cost, additional cost because of the oversizing of some of the piping out there, I believe, was $578,000. Mr. Flanagan is here tonight to ask for the $578,000. There are a couple of issues that should be discussed, I believe. The first issue, I believe, this is the, if I understand correctly, this is the first time we heard about the $578,000. So, this is not news to us, but this is the first time we've heard about it. The second issue would be, I believe, there might be some concerns about the annexation agreement concerning the development itself. Some of the work that the village and that were going to incur, more unlikely, that I think the board will probably have to discuss, meaning the streets and sewers. They're not, they need someone to prepare already. And under the annexation agreement, I'm not sure there was compliance on your side. So, tonight, the board, this is the first time the board has seen it. It was submitted to Mr. Wallace in December, but this is the first time we've really reviewed it. So, there's going to have to be some discussions, I believe. Not disputing the calculations from Landmark, but it's probably imperative that our engineers take a look at the same numbers. And then there have to be some discussions from an equitable standpoint. Some of the costs that the village had incurred to remedy some of the infrastructure over there now. How's that sound?
Yep.
So, we're even then, right?
Add on the call.
Well, we just got this, Mr. Flanagan. I believe Mr. Batista and Mr. Gazza are looking at it also. We have to have our engineers take a look at it. We know the annexation agreement called for between ourselves, but at the same time, there's got to be some, there's some concerns from our standpoint also. And I think we've, we've probably noted to you probably two or three times about, you know, what's going on with the infrastructure out there. So, we got to address that for our citizens. So, it's a two-way street.
I understand.
Is that in writing? Do we have that in writing, what the village's doing to him?
Yes. And we, if the board recalls, we've got an impact fee out there for each home sold out there, because we had the calculations done by another engineering firm, what the cost would be to repair the streets. And we calculated that based on remaining lots to help cover our costs.
And it's a billion dollars.
Yeah, we were post, like the mayor indicated, it's right around a million dollars.
And just to be clear.
Yes, sir.
We have an annexation agreement stipulates certain requirements on the Eagle Fair Estates development.
Yes, sir.
They have not honored those agreements. There is a provision in there that says that we would consider a recapture, but it doesn't stipulate that we, what the terms of that recapture would be. So, therefore, the terms of that are vague, but the terms of the actual agreement that was agreed, you know, approved and signed and all that sort of stuff is quite clear. And that being said, Mr. Flanagan and his organization owes the village in excess of a million dollars. And there's nothing stipulating anything that guarantee any recapture fee specifically. Is that correct?
If I may, what the agreement called for, and I don't think the board, if that, this was in 2006. What the agreement called for, the forest main and sanitary sewer service shall be sized or handled in appropriate amount of current and future residential development as per recommendation of village engineer. The developer shall bear the initial cost to construct the forest main and sanitary sewer service. Since such cost is being incurred by developer, the village shall enact a recapture ordinance providing for the equitable recapture to the developer for the proportion on a per-unit basis of the entire cost of the sanitary sewer service installed by developers pursuant to this agreement. And to the extent sanitary sewer service is used by the current, including but not limited to Walker's Grove and other residential development other than Eagle Fair subdivision, the costs are still being investigated, so that was in 2006.
And were there some other agreements made with Mr. Flanagan at that point that were not honored?
Sir, what was, I believe at that point in time, they're supposed to have the performance plan.
And they didn't do that, but now they want us to stick up with our side?
I believe the performance plan wasn't...
Mr. Prime Minister.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, where has this letter been the last four months? It was in December.
It was, I believe it was sent to Mr. Wallace. I think there was some discussion between Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Wallace.
Before it became able to support.
I believe so.
So, what's the rule of the board pertaining to this? Do you want to do anything pertaining to this, or do you want to dismiss it until such time as the original stated agreement is on? If he does, all the physical, the roads, the sidewalks and all the other kind of stuff that we can discuss for the implementation of the recapture agreement?
Well, if this was given to us four months ago, we certainly should have responded by, "Oh, that's on us."
Understood.
But would you have it now? It would seem logical to me to ask Ruben DJ to look at it and come back and make a recommendation. I don't think they have a recommendation for us right now, but you would... I would think it would be up to them to work with village attorney, come back and give us a recommendation.
Well, and too, and it doesn't say board action needs to be taken tonight, this was a discussion of it, so...
Yes, sir. Do you get a copy of the original agreement?
Pardon me?
Do you need a copy of the original agreement as well?
Sure.
Yes, ordinance number 1290, I'll get the copy, it was, I take that back, it was March of 2004. Just when he annexed, roughly 10 minutes in.
What would that hold for?
1290.
Any other discussion on this one?
I...
We're done, Phil.
I believe it was for information purposes, I don't...
That's fine. Anything else, or?
Most of them.
For the official report. Start off, I didn't hear around here, but Police Commission, I know Mr. Gresbeck had some updated information he wanted to share with you.
At the last board meeting, the mayor asked what progress is made by the Police Commission, and I was not up to date at that point, so I'll try to bring up to date now. We had our first meeting in January 17, 2014. And we had additional three monthly meetings concerning that with that. At those meetings, a following has been accomplished. We elected officers of the commission. Deputy Assistant, Deputy Village Clerk Michelle Howell was typically assigned to us to help us keep on track and make sure that fair records are correct. We retained a commission attorney, Mr. Brian Copeland of Joliet, the firm of Kavanaugh, Burnley and Orville. The commission joined the only Fire and Police Commission Association. We received two presentations from two testing agencies who would help us in the process of determining candidates for the position of police officer. We did prepare, we did select, one of the testing agencies was Stenhardt and Associates located in Chicago. We prepared and adopted the rules and regulations for the commission. The rules and regulations will be published in tomorrow's street monitor, is that correct, Michelle? Okay. And last, but not least, we have prepared and submitted the commission budget for the new fiscal year. Thank you. Questions?
I believe that somebody made a wise decision deciding to chair the committee. I'm going to tell you some, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item J1, the water increase rate consideration. Trustee Pop, I'm not sure if we're going to be ready for it yet at the next meeting. I know we've been working on that. If you want to give any discussion on it now, that's fine, but I know we're intending to have Mr. Batista recommend it. And I think it's a good idea that we have a general public discussion specifically regarding the annual rate increase to be very specific as to why. And what's brought that on. And so, this is not something to be taken casually, obviously. If there's problems, the board needs to have that information, the public needs to have that information. So... Trustee Pop, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, you said...
And I appreciate you taking interest in this specifically, it's not an easy thing to bring up. Trustee Horn.
Your report tonight.
Trustee Grayson. Trustee Holston.
Your report on the first item, Mayor, I'm waiting on the Assistant Administrator for 8 to be back with the information. I do want to discuss a part of that as part of the...
Any other officials that are on board?
I discussed economic development.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have number five, economic development, a couple things. When we have a budget next meeting here, that I have a question that we put $50,000 in the budget for next year for an economic development study. This is not to hire somebody, this is for the economic development program up on the, to begin to develop a program. That would involve not just industrial development, but also retail, residential, whole package. On a scale of 1 to 10 compared to surrounding communities, we're probably a minus 4 right now. We're so far behind the eight ball, it's not even fun. Other communities are, I put in your packet tonight, a copy of what one village is doing right now on incentives to try to spur residential new housing growth. I would like to visit with some of you individually about some ideas that I have, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting. But we have to think about, there's close to, I believe, 200 homes in Monique that are built and empty right now. We have residents come and talk to us, or at least talk to me, and I know Mayor, and I think you might have been talked to as well over the winter about rental policies, and what can we do about that. And rather than doing something negative about that, I'd go to see us do something positive by spurring and encouraging people to buy homes in Monique. This is a great place to live, not a perfect place, but a great place. We need to find ways to encourage people financially to move to Monique. The village of Wilmington has done a program to encourage new building of homes there, that might be the way we want to go. We also might want to go the way of taking the homes that are here, and instead of having somebody buy off 100 homes out of California and rent them out, maybe we encourage people to move to Monique and buy a home. And in doing so, we'll find a way to incent you for a few years to help you buy that home. But I think we ought to put our thinking caps on, ask our neighbors, ask the people in the community what ideas they might have, and find ways, I know I have a son and daughter that are looking to move right now out of Chicago Heights. I want them to come to Monique. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a program that would give them incentive to come to Monique, buy a home and stay here? We've got a lot of empty homes, we need to find people to buy. If we have land that Mr. Flanagan, after he finally works out a deal with us, would like to build homes on, wouldn't it be nice if we could find ways to do that? From a business point of view, we lost a major business last year when we lost double kitchen. Who's to say that we won't lose another major business next week? And if we don't have a program to encourage business development, the only thing we have right now is just a drop in the bucket, is we're going to go to Las Vegas next month. And I haven't seen the marketing practice, by the way, and I hope we can see that before you go. But we need to put together a plan, we need to have a program that says, "Here's our economic development." If you go on the villages of Wilmington, if you go on some of the other villages in the area, you'll see they have posted on their website, surprise you didn't say something about that one when I hired you.
I think they're married for you.
Okay. But they have posted on their website, their economic development plan, and they have posted the updates. And let me tell you, we have nothing. I mean, compared to them, we have nothing, and it's embarrassing for us to even suggest we have a program because we don't. That is no way, Mayor, indicting you or anybody here. We're going to have to spend some money to have professionals come in and assist us, and we're going to have to have a five-year plan on how we even do that. Most villages are going out five to 10 years right now. And what the success that they're seeing is coming about is after years two and after years three, when they've implemented their plan and have begun to see the success. We've got to get to that year one. And year one is saying, "Okay, let's find somebody to help us do this," in terms of doing a study to see where we are. Not suggesting we hire anybody at this point, because quite frankly, we don't know what we need to do. We can try to encourage people who are looking to move in Monique to move in Monique. We can try to encourage businesses to come to Monique. We get excited about a Culvers coming to Monique. Culvers is nothing. It's, in the overall scheme of things, a Culvers is a drop in the bucket. One of the hot tickets at the last election was grocery store, grocery store, grocery store, let's have a grocery store. We don't have a grocery store yet. I get sick and tired of people telling me that we don't have a population to support a grocery store. And I go into Beecher, which is smaller than Monique, and they have a grocery store. And I go into Crete, which is smaller, and they have grocery stores. Three grocery stores, thank you. You know, the difference, those villages have economic development plans and they're executing those plans. I picked on the maintenance department a little bit tonight about their maintenance plan. Well, the same thing's true of us. For the village of Monique, we need an economic development plan. So, the first step, I think, is to put some money in there, the second step will be to find somebody to assist us, and then we go from there. In the meantime, quite frankly, not a lot of people moving in Monique, are they? Not a lot of businesses are knocking at our door saying, "Come." What we've seen going is the other way, people saying, "Oh, jeez, this is not where we want to grow, so let's go somewhere else." That's fine.
Do you need a second on that, or a ditto? And I just want to...
Have a ditto.
Ditto. And I just, a couple of short things, too, I wanted to just bring up to speed, too. And I would then say, I'm going to harp on the website, too, that we're, I know pictures were taken and things, but I wanted to get a report from somebody by tomorrow afternoon on where we stand with, on the website, and if we could have a launch date. This is six months now, and it is still not done. As Justice Holston said, we are not there, we are a minus 4, we're a zero, and we can't expect anybody to come here if they, we don't even have that updated website. And I do know, and I will say it again, about the Facebook page, you know, just putting even like a special meeting on there, just pass it around. At least we can keep in touch with the village that way for a few hundred people anyway. And then, too, I just wanted to bring up about the bill payment policy that we talked about last month. I know we talked about it only briefly, but after having talked to Darryl today, too, I'm very happy to note that we are going to adopt that policy very darn quickly, and the bills have gone out until this board has a chance to review before payment. So, thank you both for that.
Yeah. Any new business? Open to the public? Non-agenda items, make time for three minutes before you read the man.
Dave, second, 25712512. So, what do we end up paying for H2 and H4?
H4 was $4,165,000. H2... Sorry, is that correct?
$36,500.
$36,500. Thank you.
Good evening. Rhonda Thompson, 25541, South of North. I came up, I was motivated by this Heidi Gonzalez, Trustee Gonzalez. I want to thank the Education Foundation for donating $5,000 to the show choir kids for Crete Monique High School. Not sure anyone here is aware, but the Crete Monique High School has a show choir and a faces group. Internationalals in Nashville, Tennessee, sang at the Grand Old Opry, we won third place nationally. They are performing at the Gayla on Saturday at Delmorel. And I think it would be really nice and really, really a good thing if our local government officials could come out and support these kids and show them that you care. And every dollar counts, because the Education Foundation is what made it possible for them to get there. They paid for the coach buses. And I also wanted to just say to Trustee Holston, thank you for being fiscally responsible, it's nice to see it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Doris Hunter Warren, 311 Division Crete. I have something to hand out to you, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure.
Do you have a next one?
Oh.
Yeah, I do have an extra one.
Again, my name is Doris Harmon Warren. I've been meeting, or at least come to the public comment, at most of our bodies that are taxing bodies. And as you can see, I did a PowerPoint just because I wanted people to be able to follow. I'm going to talk about numbers. And whenever you do that, sorry, nobody really can follow you if you just start spitting them out. So if you turn to the page called Deconstructing Your Tax Bill, I took a tax bill from the Moni and I went to Woolcomey and I looked at the different information. I then raped it by the taxing bodies and what percentage. I also, you know, so you can see that our main, as in yours... Excuse me, nervous. When we went to Crete, you're very similar to ours. We're in the same, you know, basic area of about 63 to 66% that goes to the actual school district. You're about in the same area for what the village does, which is about, you know, 13, 15%. If you look at this particular bill, you can see that, you know, this person ended up paying about $5,000 for, you know, the 2012, you know, tax year. If you go to the second page, it's a five-year analysis of the actual tax bills and rates. You can see that over that time period, that this property has fallen by 34%. And tax for your district went down by about 5%, 6% almost for this person. Crete, we've gone up about 11%. So we're going up as down, even though the property values have moved up. And still, the projected worth for most of the buildings is still falling. So it's leveling out, but it's still falling. And if you took Moni's village budget, cut it by half, you would only save about $309 for this taxpayer per year, and the school would eat that up quite quickly. I'm here to give you sort of an update about what the school board is doing. They got a $21 million windfall that they were supposed to use for projects around the district. We have a lot of buildings that have life safety issues and they're quite expensive. What the most recent finance committee recommendations are, they're going to expand classroom space at your elementary. And I guess there's some computer rooms or whatever they'd like to do. They're also going to expand the middle school. They're going to move all the sixth graders. That's the recommendations at this point. The board hasn't adopted it, but I assume they will. They're going to leave the sixth grade center open. They're going to move the sixth grade students. They're going to leave all the other buildings in Crete as is. They're already going to close the sixth grade center. And they're going to seek a referendum. Because Crete Elementary right now has about 4.5 million in life safety issues. And the district is on... They're on the hook for that. So they either build a new building or they pay those life safeties and still have the building they have. They're spending down most of the grant because by the time they actually do the renovation to the Moni Middle School, it's going to take quite a bit of that money. They also have projected foreseeable losses in the future. And as I said, all the life safety issues are unaddressed. The reason that I'm meeting or trying to talk to all the different taxing bodies is because I think it's time for the communities across the board to recognize that we need our best and brightest as school members. And in the 2015 year, they're going to have four positions available. Many of those positions run unopposed. But we need to start across this district, putting the best and the brightest in those positions. It's where all our money's going. It's where our future lies. Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Reaching to the choir.
Oh, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You said you were going to, they were going to move the sixth graders, but keep the sixth grade center open. Where are they going to use it for, do you know?
Well, the life safety part of it is more costly to demolish it than leave it as is.
It's about $3 million to demolish. They have some IT in that building. They have some other things. They're not going to close the dome, and they didn't intend to anyway. They have driver's ed programs coming out of there. They think there's people that are going to want to rent the building. I don't really believe that, but maybe there is. You know what? I don't think they can do a charter school because if you... I don't know if you know about the location, but if you actually think about what the location is, their drive to go into the buildings also goes to the high school. I don't think they're going to want, at least I hope they don't want the liability of adding a charter school and then having to share all these expenses. Plus, the football field's right there. They're still using the dome. And if you have any other questions, I...
Are you running through the board?
At this point, I don't know. My husband ran last time. We're in Mike Terre's area. We had three candidates in our area. Nobody else had anybody but one candidate. So, you know, I mean, I'll think about it, you know, but I'm hoping that we can get people in there that have a financial background, that have the interest of the community, that will open up the committees so that people can speak. And, you know, right now, we're leaving all our options open. It's not off the table, I would possibly consider.
Does everybody understand our school district is run by districts, too, because we're under a consent decree? So our school district is different than pretty much any other school district in the state. In 1999, the school district lost a lawsuit, and there's a federally mandated consent decree. So our school district is divided up into districts by school population. So we're in Moni District 1. So we have one seat on the board, but all of us voters, we all are responsible, or the seven voting members of the school are responsible, you know, the whole district.
But you only vote in your area, so...
So we only...
Which is why many people run unopposed because they, you have to recruit somebody from that area to run, et cetera. Thank you.
David Holston, on behalf of St. Paul's, UCC Moni. Two things. Last Saturday, the village of Moni sponsored and five different churches in Moni hosted a Easter celebration. 325 people were fed free breakfasts. Different churches, there were all kinds of, about 500 people altogether, as close as we could determine, were there. We had Easter Bunny, Hans, we had all kinds of family things. Again, this was sponsored by five Moni churches and hosted, or hosted by five Moni churches and sponsored by the village of Moni. I think it was a great event, well-done by all the parties that were there, that were involved. A number of the trustees, Clerk Hazer flipped, made sausage for several hours, and only three people had to go to the hospital. It was really a very nice time. And congratulations to the churches. A number of comments were made about how it was nice to see all the churches working together with the village to do different things, and we're beginning to see more. I think there's several events planned over the next few months to continue that and hopefully we can continue to do that. And then, because I'm from St. Paul's, I have tickets tonight for the pork chop dinner on May 3rd. Two pork chops and everything goes for $12. We've been doing that for, what, eight years, Jimmy? And I'm going to try to get out the pork, Jimmy, pot, too. Thank you.
Kim Gray, 5826 West Roosevelt Street.
And Ada Harris, 5828 West Roosevelt Street.
I am, again, coming in to find out or propose the fence that surrounds the truck stop. I was here last year and never received any information in regards to what was transpired or who came out of the survey that was conducted. Was there survey that was conducted by you?
No. You're referring to your townhomes at very well. I went out there last year. We have one of the engineering firms that was out here attending that with me as well. And we determined some of the aerials and such where the plats are and also looking at the history of the property to... That fence, another thing we could tell was put there by the developer, the townhomes, not by the truck stop. So it's actually on your property. So the fence is yours to do with as you say foot.
Okay. Well, I was never informed of that. And it was always, prior to your determination, it was always my understanding that it was the truck stop's fence.
No, it's actually, you can see, if you look at the, if you look at the aerials from 1997, which is the first, we can go back to 2004, I believe it was, or what that... Right. You can actually see where the fence was actually erected by the developer. This is best we can determine. And it's clearly, from what we can tell, it's clearly on the property of the townhomes, not on the property of the truck stop.
Hey, the townhomes were just built in 2003, so...
The aerials are not necessarily to a specific date. You know what I'm saying? When I say 2004, it could have been anywhere during 2004 that the aerial would have applied. But regardless, the fences are on the property. As also indicated by the fact that the return on the furthest west end of the fence, it returns to the south. If it was owned by the truck stop, there is no reason why the truck stop would encroach on anybody's property further to the, to the south. You know, and that's the same fence material everything else is there.
So I guess I would have a question in regards to it. We just decided that we wanted to change the fence and did just behind our house. There wouldn't be a problem with that?
Just come and get a permit for replacing your fence, that's fine.
Okay.
If I may add one thing, because I know we spoke over the weekend. I did talk to Ruben Batista, I believe it was on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday of this week. As far as, you know, the fence issue and the retention on that, as all the paper being blown over. I know that I requested Ruben talk to DJ, our superintendent, to get that cleaned up for you. There is a program that Ruben mentioned, that school has children for community service to get service hours. They are looking into that for you. And again, it was Tuesday we spoke, Monday or Tuesday.
Right.
And it was raining, so that is in the works. We have that at least cleaned up for you. And I imagine the fence thing is something that I know we spoke about, and this is a little bit news as far as to property.
Right.
But we are trying to at least get that cleaned up as far as...
It's done.
It's done? Okay. I couldn't see the... Okay, yeah, so if you've noticed it, obviously it's done. But we are trying to work as best with you folks down there. Obviously, living right down the street, I know that, you know, I can go past where my kids can see it, too. So we are trying to work as best as we can. It does take a little bit of time.
If you're referring to the fence that's near your reception area, it's actually owned by the village.
Okay.
Just so you know, so the part that's between the village and the truck stop is owned by the village. So if that falls down, it's on us to deal with, just like the fence structure behind your house. Now, the attorney just brought to my attention as well, before you're replacing your fence, if you got a homeowner's covenant or anything like that in your townhomes, you may want to confirm that there might be some consistency requirement for, they all got a look to say or something like that. Or just go before your homeowner's group if there is one.
Right.
That's not for us to superimpose. We merely have to adhere to our fencing requirements for purposes.
So if, okay, for instance, we have a small homeowners. And if I and my neighbor decided that we wanted to get the same fence, we could do that. And then not worry because the other...
As far as work is concerned, yes. As far as your homeowners association is, if there is one, there may not be a covenant on the property that establishes homeowners association. I don't know.
We've got some restrictions on fences as well.
No, but that, our fencing requirements are documented. You can grab a form before you leave here.
You may have some bylaws, ma'am. And you got to be careful with the bylaws if you're an association. Like you indicated, you might need their approval. So village is one thing, but if you live in an area that had bylaws and covenants, you have to make sure that they give you approval to do it, otherwise they can tell you to take it down. So like the mayor's indicating and Trusty Holston, we have our requirements for a fence, that's one thing. But your bylaws, and when you close on a deal to get bylaws, you want to stick, it might be in there. And if it's not, I would check with your homeowners association because you will need their approval eventually, more likely.
If there's only...
There's three in one and four in the other.
So you got two or seven homes.
Right. And but there's three in one association, four in another, because that's the way it was built, three, and then later built four, and they had two separate.
If you're not sure, you can only go to the quarter deeds website. You'll identify your covenants and maybe own the property as well.
I just have one other... Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, there's a website you can go on to see those aerial pictures. That's Woolcomey... And that'll show you the pictures, 20097, 2004, 2007. You can see the grill, and you'll probably see your fence.
And ma'am, if you would, Mr. Batista, before you take the lead, I'll hand you a copy of the year of...
And just for my information, I was wondering, is anything going to be done this year with Egyptian Trail?
That was the last meeting.
It's still working.
Yeah.
And it's not for lack of effort on our part. We've got some issues with Egyptian Trail.
I dot schedule...
Just because of where I live, it's like...
I dot schedule has always been 2014-15 completion. That's been for about three years.
Great. And that's why we can't get anybody with Moni because of the...
Anyone else? I would say a motion to adjourn.
As long as, if we can put on for sure the next special meeting, pending litigation, and I want to talk about a situation from the board. We talked about it before, but we need some clarification. I know Mayor's got a commitment tonight, but if we can have it on for the Wednesday interview.
One last thing, Mr. Medford, and Donson, to you and your family in St. Paul's.
Let's go up lotion. Gracy?
Sorry.
Gonzalez? Gracy?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.